The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, May 11th, 2021 is now called to order.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Nolan?
Mr. President, would like to make a motion to appoint John Whibbons to the St. Joseph County Public Library Board, to reappoint John Ferretti and Raphael Morton to the Early Intervention Board, to reappoint Mark Root to the MACOD Policy Board. And this, down at the bottom, the Economic Development Commission will be doing that also tonight?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations at this time?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. John Whibbons is appointed to the St. Joe County Public Library Board, and John Ferretti and Raphael Morton are reappointed to the Early Intervention Board, and Mark Root is reappointed to the MACOD Policy Board. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April 13th, 2021, public hearing.
Move.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the April 13th, 2021, public hearing are approved. Next, we have first readings. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 5221?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
5221, an ordinance admitting and supplementing an appendix, special appliance and needs for the St. Joseph County Health Department, petitioner Health Department.
Bill Number 5221 is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee?
5321, an ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by Warren Township for property being located at 25698 State Road 2, petitioner Warren Township.
Bill Number 5321 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
5421, an ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by Matthew and Rebecca Gerard for property being located at 2180 Pine Hollow Lane, same being filed with the Area Board of Zoning Appeals petitioner, Matt and Rebecca Gerard.
Bill Number 5421 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
5521, a resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming resolution number blank of the St. Joseph County Council declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area. It's a confirming resolution. The petitioner is Unifrax LLC.
Bill Number 5521 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next, on the agenda, resolutions. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 3921?
A resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring a portion of St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1-1 and SEC declaring petitioner Unifrax LLC.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill Number 39 dash 21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, my video is not working on my computer for some reason, so I'm just a black box. Good evening, members of county councils. My name is Kristen Brown, Economic Development Specialist with Department of Infrastructure, Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floors. For you this evening is a declaratory resolution for an economic revitalization area in support of a tax abatement request for Unifrax LLC at 54401 Smilax Road in New Carlisle, Indiana, located in Council District F. This request is an ERA designation for 10 years for a real and personal property tax abatement. All abatement values and schedules will be finalized during the confirmatory resolution process. All this action does tonight is to designate the Unifrax site as an economic revitalization area. Just to summarize real quick about the project, the petitioner is planning to renovate approximately 13,000 square feet. Their existing plant to install in the manufacturing process, total project cost of $13 million. This new line is expected to produce materials that will improve battery efficiency, getting to greater energy storage in many applications, including consumer electronics and electric vehicles. Unifrax will be retaining all 115 current employees while adding 20 new jobs comprised of plant operators, technicians, engineers, and management to support the new process line. Current average wage for the plant is around $30 an hour with the new jobs anticipated to be in this range. As this is Economic Development Week and today is actually Business Retention and Expansion Day, we are excited about business choosing to expand their operations within St. Joseph County and ask for your approval of this declaratory resolution. Steve Rendell, who is the plant manager for Unifrax out in New Carlisle, would like to provide a few comments regarding the project. Afterwards, if you have any further questions, we're happy to answer them. Steve?
Any questions from council?
Yeah, this is Steve Rendell, plant manager at Unifrax. I think Chris said it real well there. This is an exciting opportunity for both the people, existing people who work at Unifrax facility and to be involved in some new tech, which is truly groundbreaking in the battery performance sector. It's a, it does house an existing building, does not, at this point, mean any expansion. And it's also environmentally, has no impact on the environment, only requiring minor adjustments to existing permits. We've worked hard to persuade Unifrax senior leadership that the New Carlisle facility is a good option to bring this new tech and would appreciate your support in helping to make this happen.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 3921. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Hi, Jeff Ray. I'm President and CEO, Southland Regional Chamber, with offices at 101 South Michigan Street in downtown South Bend. Just here to voice some, some support for Unifrax. Request Unifrax is really one of the first businesses located out in the New Carlisle industrial area. They've been a model employer since day one. They continue to grow and expand. This is a global company that could make investments really anywhere in the world and has continued to make investments here in the New Carlisle facility. We're grateful to have them in our community. Their average wage sits well above average wages here in St. Joseph County. We think it's the kind of employer we'd like to have in St. Joseph County. We encourage your support of the resolution to help facilitate this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of Bill 3921? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of Bill 3921? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 3921. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass, Bill Number 3921, was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Kana Ricky. Are there any further comments from any council member on Bill 3921? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krzyszynski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
The Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 3921 passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill Number 4521?
Resolution of the County Council, St. Joseph County, Indiana, approving an agreement extending the St. Joseph County Housing Consortium and authorizing the execution thereof.
Petitioner?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Lori Timmer with the City of South Bend, Department of Community Investment, with offices on the 14th floor of this building. This resolution authorizes President Castoni to execute documents to renew the St. Joseph County Housing Consortium under an interlocal agreement among the three jurisdictions of St. Joseph County, the City of South Bend, and the City of Mishawaka. The consortium was established in 1991 as a means to receive federal home program dollars from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The typical annual allocation of home funds from HUD is about $1 million. And since the consortium was established in 1991, more than $28 million of home funds have gone towards affordable housing projects in St. Joseph County. The purpose of the home grant is to provide housing to low to moderate income households, and this is accomplished by rehabbing existing houses and apartments, building new construction, homeowner and rental units, and providing rental assistance for vulnerable populations in the community. Past projects of the consortium in the county include Shamrock Estate Senior Housing in North Liberty, upgrades to Prairie Village Apartments in New Carlisle, the Lakeville School Senior Apartments Rehab, and many owner occupied rehabs throughout the county. The current interlocal agreement expires December 31st, 2021, and the new agreement extends the consortium for another three years through December 31st, 2024. And I'd be glad to take any questions.
Any questions from council? Thank you very much. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 4521. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on Bill 4521?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass, Bill Number 4521, was made by Councilwoman Hess, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Kana Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Yes, Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
The Root?
Yes.
Krzyszynski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 4521 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 4821?
An ordinance admitting ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner, commissioner.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill Number 4821 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Kim Cartwright, Human Resource Director, St. Joseph County, offices at 27 West Jefferson, 7th floor. We have asked for this salary change for additional duties for the HR assistant, also helping in the mailroom. Our HR assistant was helpful in the mailroom and is going to continue to be a backup for the mailroom clerk. The mailroom clerk had to be out for three months, and we're glad to have her back, but that additional work needed to be done, and the HR assistants did that. So we do ask for your approval for the funding of this additional money for duties that this position is now taking on.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 4821. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 4821. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass, Bill Number 4821, was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilwoman Kana Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Tullian?
Yes.
Katanzright?
Yes.
Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krzyszynski?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 4821 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill Number 4721?
An ordinance admitting ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner, probate court.
Mr. Krzyszynski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening. Cheryl Rush, Controller at the St. Joseph Probate Court. These appropriations are for the family court grant, including a salary amendment for the court administrator that'll run the program. The salary amendment will only be for the timeframe of this grant.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 4721. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 4721? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass, Bill Number 4721, was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on 4721? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krzyszynski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan? Mr. Nolan, are you muted?
Oh, and then yes, on the motion.
Thank you. Mr. File?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 4721 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill Number 50-21?
An ordinance admitting ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner, prosecutor.
Good evenings. Bob Reisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office, with offices on the 10th floor of the County City Building. We're asking for a salary amendment to provide salary levels for the deputy prosecuting attorneys as reflected in the approved Fund 1,000, 2021 budget. There's no change in headcount or in funding.
Thank you. Mr. Krzyszynski, committee report, please.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 5021. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 5021. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
For approval.
Do I hear a second? A motion to pass, Bill Number 50-21, was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member in regards to Bill 5021? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krzyszynski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 50-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill Number 5121?
An ordinance submitting ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner, prosecutor.
Yes, Bob Reisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of the County City Building. This is a request for a salary amendment to provide salary levels for supplemental pay as reflected in the approved Fund 7398 pretrial diversion in the 2021 budget. No change in headcount or in funding.
Thank you. Mr. Krzyszynski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 5121. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 5121. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass, Bill Number 5121, was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Kana Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on 5121? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krzyszynski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 5121 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill Number 2221?
An ordinance admitting ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner, prosecutor.
Mr. Krzyszynski, committee report, please, sir.
Yes, Bob Reisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office. Mr. Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Jump the gun. Bob Reisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of the County City Building. This is a request to establish the 2021 budget for the Prosecutor's Pretrial Diversion Fund 7398 and to make a salary amendment adjustment for the Chief Deputy Prosecutor from 107,096 to 116,773. The salary is paid from the pretrial diversion fund.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 2221. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of 2221? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Motion for passage.
A second? A motion to pass, Bill Number 2221, was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Katanzright. Are there any further comments from any council member on 2221? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krzyszynski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 2221 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill Number 3621?
An ordinance admitting ordinance 7620, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner, prosecutor.
Mr. Krzyszynski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much, sir. Petitioner?
Yes, Bob Reisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of the County City Building. This is a request to reduce one legal position, secretary position, and add one paralegal position in Fund 1,000. It's a change needed due to position movements after the 2021 budget was submitted and approved. There's no change in headcount or in funding.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 3621. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 3621?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass, Bill Number 3621, was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Krzyszynski. Any further comments from any council member on 3621? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krzyszynski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 3621 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have a public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our April 27th, 2021, committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 4621?
An ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purposes herein specified from the several departments herein listed of St. Joseph County Government.
Thank you. May I have a motion on Bill 4621?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion to pass, Bill Number 4621, was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Krzyszynski. Any further comments on this bill from any council member? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krzyszynski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Katanzright?
Yes.
Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 4621 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda, we have land use planning. Bill Number 4021 was tabled at the request of Area Plan. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 4121?
4121, an ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council, admitting Title 15, Chapter 154, Land Usage of St. Joseph County Code to revise setback in off-street parking regulations in the University District, petitioner, St. Joseph County Area Plan Commission.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill Number 41-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening. This is Sean Klein with Area Plan Commission staff, with offices on the 11th floor of the County City Building. As described in committee, the first part of this text amendment is to correct an unforeseen consequence of a 2019 text amendment, which effectively imposed the lengthier front setback on university properties that abut private streets rather than the side setback that was the standard in the past. This is just to correct for that error and to allow for consistent development on university campuses and efficient use of land. The second part effectively exempts the University District from required off-street parking regulations. This staff is proposing this just in recognition that the colleges and universities themselves are in a better position to determine what their unique parking needs are than county planning staff. We did work closely with the University of Notre Dame in drafting this text amendment, and it gained their approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none will open the public hearing on Bill 4121. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to?
Yes, this is Tim Sexton, uh, Associate Vice President of Public Affairs, University of Notre Dame, with offices 405 Main Building, University of Notre Dame. 46556, we just want to speak in favor of Area Plan and, uh, the proposal submitted to you today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who, who else who wishes to speak in favor of Bill 4121? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of Bill 4121? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 4121. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 4121 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tloyan.
Yes.
Mr. Katanz, right.
Yes.
Mr. Canariki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 4121 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 4221?
Norant submitting and supplementing Title 15 Land Usus, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of Sancho's County Code as amended for unaddressed property of 23 acres, more or less, located at the southeast quadrant of Spruce Road and Early Road and unaddressed property of 60 acres, more or less, located at the southeast quadrant of Edison Road and Elderberry Road, together totaling 83.42 acres, more or less, from A Agricultural District to I Industrial District. Petitioner, Ward Living Trust with Thelma J. Truex and Laurel L. Kublick as trustees and life estate for Laurel L. Kublick.
Thank you. Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number 42-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Area Plan?
Good evening. This is Ryan Fellows with the Area Plan Commission, part of the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, with offices on the 7th and 11th floor. This is property in the, uh, New Carlisle area. And as you can see from the zoning map on your screen, uh, the property to the north is part of the New Carlisle Town, uh, which is zoned general industrial. And then the most of the property surrounding it in a light blue color is, uh, county industrial zoning. And there's a small amount, uh, near Larison Boulevard, near where the curve is, that is still zoned A Agricultural District surrounding the property. As you can see, uh, this is a tilled land, uh, cliffs, uh, tech and cliffs coat. You can see in the background here, this is a view of the property along, um, Elderberry looking north. And this is from along Spruce looking north. And there is a home on the property as well. And you can see from the site plan that there is a, um, AEP electrical line overhead easement that cuts through the property diagonally. The property on the northern part, which is a light blue color on this map, is on the 2002 Comprehensive Plan, Land Use Plan as part of the industrial growth area. Whereas the dark blue area on the map, which includes the southern part of this property, is the industrial reserve area, which is reserved for 2020 and beyond, which we're obviously in. And in reviewing the criteria found in state law, the Area Plan Commission brings this to you with a favorable recommendation. And the present, the petitioner is also available, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions from counsel for Area Plan? Petitioner?
Yes, good evening, members of council. My name is Aaron Blank, Lawson Fisher Associates, uh, with offices at 525 West Washington in South Bend. Representing petitioners Laurel Kublick and Thelma Truex for reselling property to the industrial district. Uh, and the use that has been acknowledged since exception in every iteration of the Comprehensive Plan is not allowable or referred use. So in terms of the overall core development area of Sancho's County through its redevelopment commission, has been working with the town of New Carlisle and all of township officials to create a development agreement that solidifies the core development area, restricts certain uses, and establishes development guidelines. Some others could speak on the particulars of that development agreement better than I, but the basic vision of this core development area is that development site or sites occupying the roughly 730 acres that were rezoned south of here between Larison and Willow down to State Road 2 with adjacent development sites that are either aligned to either be directly supporting or tertiary to the, the larger development uses, but contained within this core development area. We've heard from some in the past that there's already enough industrials owned land and, uh, the zoning should be limited until all currently zoned property is developed. Um, and it's written in the Area Plan Staff Report about, uh, that it's designated for industrial and the future industrial. I'll remind the plan, uh, council members that we haven't reached the industrial zoning acreage limit, uh, stipulated within the plan. And, um, we feel that, uh, establishing this type of property for industrials and having this conglomeration of industrial uses in a defined area with a defined use and defined development standards such as we have here, are using all the same roadways, utility infrastructure, and potential workforce pool, uh, goes a long way to the edicts within the plan of alleviating and minimizing the loss of agricultural land. Because by its very definition, alleviating means to temper or control, and temper and control is exactly what the Comprehensive Plan and ultimately the IUC Core Development Plan is intended to do. And it's why it's ordered by the signatory stakeholders. And this reselling petition and others like it are not ill-conceived knee-jerk reactions. They're, they're simply the execution of the Comprehensive Planning Document that lays out the vision of economic development for this county, and it may seem sudden to some, given the recent emphasis on rezoning near this property. But this area has been designated for potential industrial development use since inception of the Comprehensive Plan. So rezoning this property to industrial is another step in furthering the vision for Sancho's County to lead the region in economic development that ultimately benefits residents of Sancho's County. The petitioners are keenly aware of the transformation to longstanding industrial nature of this neighborhood due to the fact that their family has owned, occupied, and operated this property under the Ward Trust name since sometime at least late 1960s and possibly prior to that. And let's say lastly, acknowledging the fact that there's no site plan associated with this resounding petition, which urged something to categorize it as, as a speculative rezoning. I'll agree that there's some speculation in the end use of this property, once it's rezoned. Uh, but what is not speculative at this point is the level of restrictive use commitments placed on the property. The input decisions that have yet to be made by the core developmental stakeholders and approved by Sancho's County officials through the site payment process that will require for eventual development of this property. So you have before you property with favorable recommendation from APC, their staff, and the Council on Use Committee that's requesting a rezoning is in alignment with the Comprehensive Plan. Uh, industrial use has been identified as most desirable use based on the criteria set forth in that Comprehensive Plan and include the property location, existing roadway corridors, and utility infrastructure that's already in place. So the petitioners are respectfully requesting to rezone to industrial with restricted covenants in an area of the county that has been designated for industrial development for the past 20 years and is completely congruent with the plan. And, uh, we respectfully request members of the County Council pass this bill for industrial zoning with those restricted covenants.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing none will open the public hearing on Bill number 42-21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my apologies. I was trying to speak in favor, and I just didn't get my unmute, uh, there long enough. Can I continue to do that?
Yes, sir.
Great. Uh, my name is Jeff Ray. I'm the President and CEO, South Bend Regional Chamber, offices at 101 North Michigan Street in South Bend. Uh, we were with, uh, in front of you several months ago on similar rezoning requests, um, in this neighborhood. And at the time encouraged you to take, uh, action to prepare land for some development opportunities in a neighborhood that has long been a plan for industrial development. Um, those actions have spurred some significant interest out in that area. And I think you, uh, took an important step in that process by putting, uh, restrictions on it that limit the types of uses to make sure that they fit well into the neighborhood. I see this zoning request as another step that really helps us square off, um, some parcel and, and really make it a little bit more desirable. And just wanted to, like we did several months ago, um, encourage you to, uh, support, uh, this rezoning request with the similar, uh, restrictions there. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of Bill 4221? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion on Bill 4221? Do I hear a motion on Bill 4221?
Motion for passage.
A motion was made to pass Bill number 4221 by Mr. Nolan. It was seconded by Mr. Katanz, right? Any further comments from any council member on 4221? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File.
Hey.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Tloyan.
Yes.
Mr. Katanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Canariki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Let, let the record show that Bill number 4221 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 4321?
Norant submitting and supplementing Title 15 Land Usus, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the Sancho's County Code as amended. The property located at 54506 Buckeye Road and 54620 Buckeye Road from A Agricultural District to our single-family district. Petitioner Joseph and Christie Leininger.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number 43-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Area Plan?
You're welcome.
I am Fellows again, um, offices on the 11th floor of County City Building, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. As you see on the screen, this is property currently zoned A Agricultural District along with the property surrounding it. All along the south side, however, is property zoned our single-family district. I want to make special note of the subdivision on the bottom right corner of the screen, the southeast corner, that is the Northridge Valley Estate, um, Northridge Valley subdivision. There is going to be municipal water and sewer coming up from that subdivision to serve this proposed property, uh, to be rezoned. Here you see a picture of the property, and you see kind of in the center, a little to the left, uh, some of the homes from that subdivision. And there's additional, uh, picture of the same property. And then here's a, uh, concept plan for that property. It's proposed for around 115, 130 homes or so. When you look at the overall region, a lot of the remaining in this area, a lot of the remaining properties area that has already zoned our single-family district, but has not been developed, is part of what we, the flood plain, uh, called the best available data, showing that it could be susceptible to flooding. Um, so that's probably a very good reason why it hasn't developed yet and why it's reasonable to request this land to be, uh, redeveloped, to be developed. And in consultation with, um, the various departments and agencies and reviewing this before the Area Plan Commission, this comes with a favorable recommendation. The petitioner is also available, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel for Area Plan? Petitioner?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Robert Nichols, uh, representing, uh, I'm with Avon Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson, South Bend, representing the petitioners, Joseph and Christie Leininger, as well as the contingent purchaser, client custom homes. Um, it is the intent of the contingent purchaser to develop this 58-acre parcel into approximately 115 single-family homes, as you can see from the concept. As Ryan noted, um, the property is, uh, in an area of questionable soil types, um, as well in proximity of sewer and water offered by Mishawaka. So the best use of land, we feel, will be this subdivision. Um, we will take into account Area Plan's recommendation to look at this subdivision as a, uh, the intent to look at a small area plan, to look at the green space and public spaces and common areas to add amenities for the subdivision. Um, again, it will be connected there to the south of the current Northbridge Valley subdivision. Um, so we would ask that you take a look at this with a, with a favorable recommendation and pass it as presented. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing none will open the public hearing on Bill number 4321. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 4321. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to pass. Second.
A motion to pass Bill number 4321 was made by Councilman Root, and it was seconded by... Who made the second? I'm sorry.
I did. Krasinski.
Thank you, sir. It was seconded by Mr. Krasinski. Any other comments from any council member on 4321? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tloyan.
Yes.
Katanz, right.
Yes.
Canariki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 4321 passed by a unanimous vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 4421?
Norant to the Sancho's County Council, creating an American Rescue Plan Act Fund, an authorizing fund, implementation plan. Petitioner, Steve Dalton.
Counsel, this is Steve Dalton, financial advisor. This bill you'll require, you'll remember is to set up...
Excuse me.
Yes, go ahead.
Excuse me, sir. Um, I believe we need a motion
Motion.
to, uh, a unanimous vote to hear this bill?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Need a motion now to, uh, to hear it, or do you need me to proceed with explaining the bill?
I mean, just agree.
We, we got to proceed.
Gotcha. This bill, uh, will set up the fund, Fund 8950, to accept the dollars from the federal government from the, uh, American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Recovery Grant. We expect those, the first half of those dollars to arrive next week and the second half to arrive within the next year. The bill is specific to language provided by the State Board of Accounts, dealing with the four different types of eligible expenses. Uh, they're, they're large, uh, general categories of expenses dealing with the coronavirus emergency and the workers that are involved in that emergency and revenue reductions, the revenues that were lost during 2020 and investments in infrastructure. Uh, we need this bill to be passed so that we can put the funds in... We need this bill to be passed so that we can put the funds in the appropriate accounting fund when they arrive, and we can begin building appropriations to bring to the council. No dollars can be spent without being appropriated by this council by separate bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel for the petitioner?
You say each appropriation is a separate bill?
There will be, we have four years to spend the money, so it's entirely possible that you won't see the spending requested all at once. It could very well be that you'll see portions come in various bills over time as the projects are pulled together that are being requested.
Thank you so very much.
Any other questions from any council member from Mr. Dalton? Hearing none will open a public hearing on Bill 4421. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 4421. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
A motion to pass Bill number 4421 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from any council member in regards to Bill 4421? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tullian.
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright.
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki.
Yes.
Mr. Root.
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan.
Yes.
Mr. File.
Hi.
Ms. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show, record show that Bill number 4421 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes public hearings for this evening. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Next is new business. Next is comments from the public on anything not on tonight's agenda. Next is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.